I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you, council. And thank you, guests. And at this moment, I'd like to turn, give the opening over to Councilor Bill Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My topic tonight is a history of transportation in Steinbeck, namely, the automobile business. It was in September of 1984, eighteen families moved alongside a stony creek which we now call Steinbeck. They came by ox-drawn wagons and continued with horse-drawn buggies and slaves. In 1911, J.R. Friesen bought himself a new Model N Ford, the forerunner to the Model T. This was a very controversial, this was very controversial to the religious community, so he was excommunicated from his church. His excitement of the Ford car caused him to seek out a Ford franchise. In June of 2014, going back to 2000, Friesen officially became the Ford, first Ford dealer in Western Canada. This was the beginning of the automobile business in Steinbeck. And by 1928, he was selling seventy cars per year at $650 each. Ford has been a successful dealership in Steinbeck for a hundred and five years, and it has changed ownership several times, and today is owned by Ron Lebke, and it's called Fairway Ford. And in 1923, the Lowen family acquired the Chevrolet dealership. Son Herman had it until 1981, when it was turned over to Charlie Penner. Then in 2004, it was sold to Kent Lettingham, who has, who is the current owner. In 1937, Mayor Eddie Penner sold a few cars from his radio repair shop. And in 1938, he became the Dodge DeSoto dealership. The Penner family operated it until 1981, when it was acquired, when they acquired the Chevrolet franchise. At that time, Eddie Penner's son-in-law, Jim Duestader, took over the Dodge Chrysler dealership, which the family ran until 2018. Last year, it was sold to the Berchwood Dealer Group from Winnipeg. The Mercury dealership was acquired by John D. Penner, Eddie Penner's brother, who had quite a reputation. One story was told, that he went to see a client farmer, and while he showed the car and did his sales pitch, his wife milked the cow, and when she brought in the pile of milk, the farmer's wife was so impressed, they bought the car. The Regir family had the Chrysler dealership, and the Einbrecht family in 1940 had the Pontiac franchise, which in 1959 was sold to our mayor, Ali Abartman. He then turned it over to his three top salespeople, of one was, of who one was Art Friesen, who operated the business until 2004, when it was purchased by Kent Lettingham, having purchased both the Chevrolet and Pontiac franchises, and it is currently called Lettingham GM. By the 1950s, the slogan and reputation was formed, "Steinbeck, the Automobile City." And by 1970, over sixty percent of cars that were sold in Steinbeck went to Winnipeg and Northwestern Ontario. In the 60s, in the early 60s and 70s, Manitowas' first public auto auction was in Steinbeck, and they sold between a hundred and a hundred and fifty cars with no reserve bids, and cars sold as low as $50 each. And by the 70s, there were also various import cars being sold in Steinbeck, namely VW by Bammon Auto Sales, Datsun, which was then, Nissan, which was called Datsun at the time, started by Bob Bammon, who was a former councillor, Toyota, which was, Toyota franchise was done by Peter Funk, and he still owns the business to this day, and it's still being run by the Funk family. Mazda, started by Harry Peters, and is today owned by Ron Lebke. The Honda franchise is presently owned by Doug Kreutzer. Over the years, there were many other makes that came and went, like Nash, AMC, Lada, Renault, and today, we have a total of nine dealerships, new and used. I was talking with different retired salespeople as well as dealers, and we did our math, and Steinbeck, over the years, has done close to half a million car transactions. Our current slogan for Steinbeck and the automotive business is "It's Worth the Trip." This reputation continues to motivate our auto dealers and the community to strive towards friendly, great service and integrity. Many customers continue to make the trip to our city from all over the province and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Okay, council, we have, we have our agenda in front of us. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as stands. Counselor Swakesworth, second by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We have the minutes of April 2, 2019, the regular council meeting on page one. Council, we've all had the chance to review. I need a motion to approve. Counselor Damian Penner, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Okay, any comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, we have no public hearings. We are just a few minutes after 7:35, so we'll go to 7A, our delegation from our RCMP Staff Sergeant, Harold Lenninga, re the annual performance plan. Can you please turn to page four on your agenda? And Harold, can you please take the podium? Welcome here.
Thanks very much. Thanks for having me. It's great to see the new council and see everyone. What I thought, have I sent you the quarter stats that those, that said don't?
They're in their package, they're yearly one.
So I'll be referring to the stats for January 1st, March, to March 31st, which are the most recent stats. So, just as an explanation, every year, I meet with council, and we also meet as far as the RCMP Advisory Group to talk about our priorities, and that's primarily your priorities that we work through. I do this with the city and as well as five other RMs within Steinbeck detachment area, one RM and a Buffalo Point constable within the Sprague detachment. So I do have this meeting, I discuss it, so I thought it'd be important, just, you know, that we talked about this. So the annual performance plan is something that you guys tell me what your priorities are, what things you want me to work towards. Currently, they are traffic initiatives, what we call it somewhat misleading sometimes to some people, but we call it organized crime, the reduction of drugs, and that's because of our belief that drugs stem from organized crime. Next is the reduction of property crime, and with that, we look at break-in enters as well as mischiefs, and then, of course, police visibility. So when we look at that, looking at the 2019 stats versus 2018 for the last quarter, you know, I can't really explain it into 2018 why we had zero impaireds for that quarter, but we did have ten for 2019. In my time in Steinbeck, I can tell you, we averaged between fifty-eight and sixty-one impaireds every year, so we're fairly consistent. 2018, we would have done the same, so I'm not sure why we had zero in that quarter, but we do have ten this quarter. Traffic accidents, you'll see a reduction. Provincial traffic offense notices, you'll see we went from seventy-eight to 150. These are specifically within the city of Steinbeck. Provincial statutes, other, and those again are what they say, provincial stats, and we went from 102 to 110. So those are the traffic initiatives, so I think we're meeting our goals with respect to that. Drug enforcement, you'll notice, went from ten to five. Our GIS unit's been tied up very extensively on our property crime issue. We've had, we broke up a bit of a crime ring in terms of property. We have a warrant for a fellow with over sixty charges for break-in enters, not just within Steinbeck, but in our entire area. We were able to locate two sheds where he was, two storage properties where he was keeping the stolen materials, so we recovered, I think, in excess of $20,000 worth of stolen property. So it's been a major undertaking for our GIS unit, and that's, you know, one of the issues there. We also just wrapped up a project, which I think you probably read about, Steinbeck Line and the Carillon, et cetera, where we charged two people with cocaine trafficking, et cetera. Next, I look at break-in enters. I'm glad, you know, pleased to see a reduction of, over the two years, from eighteen to thirteen. The mischief's unfortunately went from thirty-nine to fifty-two. I also did a calculation on the yearly, just to look at the past year, but sometimes between quarters, there can be anomalies. So in 2019, I'm sorry, 1718, we had 181 break-in enters. 2019, 1819, we had 166, so a reduction of 8.3% over the year with respect to mischief's. For the same two periods, we had 383, and then 323 this year, so a reduction of 15.7%. So overall, very pleased to see the reduction in property crime, which is, as you know, our initiatives. And that leads me to visibility, and I think the visibility lends itself to the traffic work that we're doing, the reduction in crime. We also have the traffic unit, which started last April. That's been a real, real benefit to us, and I think it's provided a great deal of exposure. You know, just visibility-wise, they're always out there as our, our members, and I think we're achieving positive results as a result of that. So my recommendation would be then, that we would maintain the current priorities as they are, but of course, it's up to you, you folks.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Staff Sergeant. At this point, I'd like to have a comment from the RCMP Advisory Committee Chair, Counselor Michael Swakesworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start out by saying that, you know, as a council and particularly as an RCMP Advisory Group, we really appreciate the work that you do. I will say that, you know, being on, being involved in this advisory group and working directly with you and the other members on it, it is a very positive working relationship that the city of Steinbeck has with, with you as our Staff Sergeant. We certainly see that also reflected in the relationship between yourself and, between our Staff Sergeant and our CAO. So we just want to start out by saying thank you. There's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes on, and we are very pleased with, with the progress that's being made. I just wanted to, to just ask you just to elaborate just a little bit. You had made reference to the fact that we, you know, we now have our traffic units stationed within Steinbeck, and that's a very positive thing. If you could just comment just a little bit more, just in regards to what this traffic unit is, and the, and sort of the, the impact you feel that it's having, having it, having the traffic unit stationed within Steinbeck.
Okay, just by way of history, since Bill shared some history, I'll share a bit of history too. When I first arrived, about seven years ago, I arrived here April 23, 2012, so it's hard to believe it's almost seven years ago. We had, we're supposed to have had a four-person section, we had a two-person section, it was a corporal and a constable. They lasted for about three years or so, and due to pressures with respect to availability of members and that, they decided they were going to shut down that section, much to my chagrin. I, I can be honest with you, I put a lot of documentation together to support why we should have a traffic services section here. We have the fastest-growing quadrant in the province. Unfortunately, we have many, many fatalities here. We have a lot of impaireds here, so I did a study of the whole province, and I was able to show how we were number one in many of the categories. I guess it was met with successful ears, and our traffic section's now back. So we actually are going to have a five-man, a five-person section, four of them already in place since last April, and we have a fifth that's currently selling his house in the Paw, and he'll be moving to Steinbeck also. So I think that gives us five members that city isn't paying for, which is, I think, a benefit, and either are the RMs, but they're definitely doing a lot of work. I asked our traffic, we have an analyst in traffic services, she estimates between 25 to 30% of their work is being done directly within the city of Steinbeck, so I think that's a fair amount of work being done. It's being done at no cost, and it really benefits us. I think it also leads to our visibility, in that these guys are, you know, five extra police officers in vehicles that are always out, and I think many of you have probably seen them with people pulled over. My members still do traffic work. We do a lot of MPI initiatives and initiatives of that nature, but I think you'll see that it's a great combined effort and also frees up our members not to necessarily have to spend as much time on traffic, although I would suggest out of the fifteen impaireds, just about ninety-eight percent of them are probably detached from members. But it's, it's definitely been a benefit, and on many levels.
Just follow-up as well, that if you could just sort of comment a little bit too, in terms of, with our priority areas. Obviously, you know, one of those is organized crime and dealing with drugs and such. You commented a little bit about the GIS unit, I take it that you would continue to say that, you know, continuing the GIS, having the dedicated officers there, that is absolutely essential in regards to, you know, continuing to have, dealing with organized crime as an issue, as a priority, because that's, those are some of the key people that are, that are doing some of the more in-depth investigation.
Absolutely. We couldn't do what we do without the city council, or without our JS unit. I know the city council's instrumental in giving them to us. They do a great deal of work with drugs, with all aspects of that. They've also taken on some of our bigger files. Unfortunately, the nature of police work is such that our members work shift work, so you get a member working three days, switching to four nights. Very difficult sometimes for these long investigations, which sometimes take months, you know, that draw out, that they can work on them. So by having a GIS unit, they're tasked with it, and they can work with it, and that's all they'll work on at that point. You also see that we use project-based policing, and by that, I mean, we'll, we'll target individuals, we'll put a couple of months into using different resources to target those individuals, and to great success also. But again, that's because of our GIS unit, so very fortunate to have them, and we have two excellent people in there.
That's good for now. Thank you.
Counselor Penner.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you so much for the great work you do for our community.
Thank you.
Very thankful. I just wanted to ask a question about false alarms. That number is quite significant. Where are the false alarms coming from? Are those like from alarms in businesses and houses?
It's a variety. We've actually, you know, with Troy and I, we haven't talked about it in a little while, but we had actually done a study where I let him know where all the false alarms were. This is a new stat we're reporting, because we think it's important that you guys see that in three months, we had 116 of them. So I know in the past, we had discussed, I know the city of Winnipeg does different options, where you get three free ones, and after that, the city might send you a bill for $25. So kind of, we've discussed cost recovery and, but that's why we've reflected that, as well as missing persons. Twenty-two actually is a lot of work. Like, the people that we do have missing can take quite a bit of time sometimes to find them, and we're very involved with that, obviously, these are vulnerable persons, so does that help so much?
Well, I guess the false alarms to me seem like that's a significant cost in terms of wasted resources.
Definitely.
Do you think that if we were to implement a fine, for lack, for lack of a better term, would it make people more conscious? Is it just, you know, irresponsibility or negligence that's causing that, or, or what? Because I just think that's a huge waste of resources if these false alarms are going on.
It is absolutely a huge waste of resources. We somewhat mitigate it by what we call a one-hit alarm. If one hit goes off, like say, a front door, and nothing inside, most, most of the businesses and residences will have the motion detectors inside. So if you have a door that goes off, but not the interior, then that could mean then that nobody's gotten in, right? Normally, you would expect, anticipate multiple alarms at a home, that somebody's entered. So having said that, we attend all of them, but we do prioritize them based on one hit versus one or more hits.
So would that priority come from council? If we'd say, no, we have to try and get some cost recovery from that, or is that a decision you would?
No, I would like that to come from council. As far as I'm concerned, if I made that policy and I told the citizens of Steinbeck that we're not going to attend anymore, it's going to be a fine, I think you guys pay for us. If you guys want us going, then we're going to go. And very much, I think that, that policy needs to come from council.
Thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a couple of quick questions. Thank you again for the work you did. I've known you for about twenty-five years or so.
Ninety-three, likely.
And I heard when you came to Steinbeck, I advocated for you, and I still advocate for you. I appreciate the work that you do, and men and women in Steinbeck Detachment. So, thank you very much. If you pass that on to them.
Thanks very much.
A couple of quick questions. On communication, visibility of police, how do you measure that?
I measure it several ways. I'm actually preparing another document that's going to send you what our priorities are, but as well as the initiatives that we do to do it.
Okay, I'm good with that. If you explain how you're going to measure it.
Yeah, but one of them is this meeting right here.
Yep.
My meeting with, with yourselves. Also, I track the meetings with the RCMP Advisory Committee, and I also involve our, measure our work within the community.
We talked extensively, a bit about traffic. Is traffic autonomous and governed under headingly, or are they under your control?
No, they're autonomous. It's essentially a Selkirk or an Eastman traffic service.
Same as they've been for a hundred years.
Yeah, however, because they work out of our office, it's a very good working relationship in the sense that I can bring to them a concern, and they'll address it.
Are they, their mandate, does it allow them to work extensively in Steinbeck, or are they still mandated to rural?
No, that's an interesting question, because I had the analyst analyze it today, and she said it's, I guess, I think it's 25 to 30%.
I got it.
I think it's 25 to 30%.
Okay, no, I'm, that's good. I heard when you said.
Well, I just want to provide the accurate information. So having said that, yeah, 25 to 30% of the tickets are written within the city. So depending who you talk to within the RCMP, there's some feeling that city of Steinbeck, similar to Selkirk and Porgeon Prairie, should pay for their own municipal traffic unit. They do, and they get that, you know, they have their own units, whereas we're benefiting from having a section. However, I would suggest, based on the new section and having 25 to 30% of their tickets written within the city of Steinbeck, that they're realizing where the work, you know, a good deal of the work needs to be done here in Steinbeck, and I would suggest that is.
Quick questions. Your manpower on the city side?
Yes.
That's you, and a GIS member, and a corporal, and?
There's sixteen of us.
Sixteen total.
Yeah, so there's myself, the GIS corporal, the GIS constable, two GD corporals, and then there's six and five, eleven constables.
Seven constables, okay. Just so that, you know, just for public access, so that we know. I have some questions as to the clearing rate, and how much of that is by city members, because I know rural also works in.
Counselor Hebert.
No, but, but.
Just one second. We were talking about the, the priorities.
Yep.
And the occurrence status.
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
Something like this, if you want to, if you want to talk about how it's managed.
No, I don't want to talk. I don't want to talk about it. What I want to say is, you obviously don't have those statistics here today, so I think that'd be better addressed in a letter.
Sure.
So you guys, you can let them meet at a different time?
No, no.
This can be taken care of something, some other time.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at what the, what the, when the stats are here, what the city's doing. I mean, we're complemented by highway patrol, we're complemented by the rural section, and I'm just wondering what, which part of this is, but I said, he doesn't have the stats here today.
If I can.
I'm sure he doesn't, and it can be better addressed through.
Yeah, through other, other ways, yeah.
Absolutely.
If you wanted to, I have prepared a bit of response with respect to that. My first meeting, which I mentioned, was seven years ago, actually, I think it was John Fair's first question, was how do I manage city versus rural resources? So I have drafted a bit of response, because I thought I could anticipate that could come up again. I had, so if you want, I can go through that. I think it is important that you folks know, and I think they'd actually be surprised. So if you want, I will go through that. It'll take a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so the first consideration I would look at then is call volume stats, which means is, how many calls are we getting, rural versus provincial, rural versus municipal and their members? So as you know, we have sixteen out of twenty-five of our members, which is 64% are municipal, nine out of twenty-five, which is 36% are provincial. Based, using the last quarter, so 2019, what I've done is, I've gone through, if you look on your form, everything between assaults and false alarms. Those, the traffic stats, I think, skew things with respect to how many tickets are written, but the other ones are the actual crimes that are occurring, and what we should look at. So if you want to write them down, what I've done is, so then I've added up for the same period of time, Hanover, La Broquerie, St. Anne, Tashane, Reynolds, which are my five RMs. The assaults were twenty-one, robberies were zero, harassment threats were fifteen, theft under was twenty-two, theft over was three, fraud was six, raking enters were twenty-three, sexual assaults were four, mischief to property was thirty, theft of vehicles was thirteen, missing persons was twenty-three, false alarms were fifty-eight. So then I totaled that, so for Steinbeck, for those, all those files, there's 365. For the RMs, there was 218, so divided that by 583, which are their totals, 62% of the files were, would be municipal, and 37% are rural. So interestingly enough, we have 64% of the police officers, and they're dealing with 62% of the calls. We have 36% on the provincial side, and they're dealing with 37% of the calls. So I would suggest that's fairly, fairly accurate, and I think a good stat to see. I also looked at prisoners. Prisoners is another telling statistic, so I track that every month to see how many prisoners we have, and just to make sure. So March, 56% municipal, 44% rural. February, 42% municipal, 53% rural, and 4% Sprague. December, January, 40.5 municipal, 46.25 rural. October, November, 58% municipal, 35% rural. September, 65% municipal, 35% rural. August, 54 and 46. So other than two months, and I could have gone back, there's months of 65, 66% for the provincial, for the municipal side, that tells me that the files that really take a lot of the meat and bones, and those are the ones people are getting arrested for, are municipal files. So that's good to see too, in the sense that, you know, when I break down the numbers, we're seeing that the bigger files, our city, you know, is dealing with it. On the basis of stats alone, this is a very good equality. It does not actually account for time expended on calls, as we don't track that. It definitely takes longer to travel to rural calls, I think we should acknowledge that. However, we can spend 34 hours guarding an MHA prisoner at the hospital on a municipal file, so you can't necessarily, if I could say, one MHA doesn't necessarily account to the hours that we're, we're traffic, we're spending in that. We had a murder-suicide within the city last year. I can tell you, every municipal and every rural member worked on that. We brought in N West, which deals with weapons, we brought in our IDN people, we brought in MCU. These are all resources that flooded our city at no cost to the city. I think it's important, as crime's changing also, that we're dealing with multi-jurisdictional crimes. Can, can I say something in camera for a second? Is it okay to go in camera, out the camera? I don't know how that works.
We have media here.
Probably not.
Yeah. You guys mind not reporting this? I'm going to have a few things I'd like to say.
We have it on video as well.
But it's on video.
Okay.
On social media.
Okay, suffice it to say that a great deal of our drugs and property crime is originating from other areas right surrounding us, but still happening here. So it's hard sometimes to differentiate which resource is going to work on that, whereas I just want to stop the problem. But it is a city problem. I'm going to explain what has happened since I've been here. By no means am I taking a credit, but in reality, this is the only time period I can refer to. When I first arrived, for three or so years, I mentioned already, we had a two-person traffic unit, we now have a four-person, we're going to a five-person. We also use extensive MPI funding, and I think you'll find this very interesting. In addition to the 25 to 30% of tickets that traffic members are writing within the city of Steinbeck, we also do extensive MPI funding, where they pay our members overtime to do traffic work. So within the city of Steinbeck, we did eighty-two different initiatives in 2018. That was a total of 1,653.5 overtime hours, which would have totaled $136,000, should you folks have had to pay for it. MPI gave us $136,000 to do that, and I won't read all the stats to you, I do have them. If you want, I could forward them to you, but it's broken down by distracted driving, road watch, gravel roads, as well as school zone campaigns. In January alone this month, MPI is funding for us seven days involving 24 members, strictly in distracted driving. That's 192 hours, and it works out to be $15,840 that they're spending on us to do distracted driving. I sent out a press release about April 3rd, 4th, and 5th, where we wrote 30 distracted driving tickets just within the city of Steinbeck. Interestingly, MPI has decided to fund only the RCMP, Winnipeg Police, Brandon Police, no other police forces will receive the funding, so any of our smaller, Morden, Winkler, et cetera, they won't receive the funding. As the detachment is located in Steinbeck, whenever the detachment members or traffic services members travel anywhere, you're receiving the visibility of the vehicles and members traveling throughout the city. One of our APP priorities also lends itself to the reduction of property crime, the fact that our members are visible. I do, I do recognize the, the city pays for additional officers, and I do mitigate that through using, charging expenses into my rural call later, and I do that for drug projects. You guys are paying for the bodies, so I get the province to pay for the actual work, which can be $40,000 to $50,000 depending on the size of our project. I also do that with overtime for MHAs. It could be the consideration at Bethesda Hospital, where we pick them up as a city, within city land. Instead of doing that, I make sure that wherever they come from, that we're charging rural, why should the city pay for that? Um, charge the city, also with any of our office expenses, the paper and all that, I ensure, even though we're 16 and nine, so that we're 64, 30% percent, I make sure that the province is paying their share. Another thing I did is, I used the rural position from Sprague Detachment, so I took one of their positions, and I was able to convert that into the provincial PDS position, and that's why we have a dog, is because I met with the arm of Hiney, and they allowed me to take one of their positions, so they're short one guy there, so that we can have a dog here, which does service them also, and they see the benefits of that, and I'm trusting we all see that. Initially, the city funded a community liaison officer, that was Kevin Winn for years, I was able to take advantage of a new program of community constables, there are only six in the province, we have two of them, one in Steinbach, one in Sprague. They teach all the DARE classes to our students, one thousand students of grade six and grade eight, and do all our liaison work, these are provincial positions at no cost to city assent. Now the community liaison position is doing GD police work instead, so the position you paid to have somebody do community liaison work is now a GD member, and for free, we have somebody else doing all our DARE, our community liaison, and all that, a huge benefit, and a cost savings, and it gives me an extra officer, and it gives the city an extra officer. As, one of the fellows, Dennis, who lives within our community, has completed his portion of the DARE training, starting May sixth until September, he'll be working a shift on, he'll just be working a regular shift as part of one of the units, so he, again, is not paid for, but will be working extensively within the city and the rural area, another benefit. The stenols, I'm not sure whether the stenols weren't set to the same ratio as the members, but we have five stenols, three are rural ones and two are municipal ones. When you consider the, you know, the discrepancy in, in members, I'm not sure by, the rural side has three, pays for three, and city for two, but they do. We're currently fully staffed, except for waiting for the arrival of rural corporal, we are receiving two new cadets at the beginning of May, these positions are funded by the province, and I can guarantee they will be working in the city at no cost to the city. So in other words, I'll have them S, what we call SDE, surplus to establishment, extra, and the province will pay for them to be here for that training. We're also part of a pilot project, we complete approximately thirty-three-hundred criminal record checks a year, approximately twenty percent, or six-hundred-and-sixty of them require fingerprints, those are all done by commissioners. This is paid for by district, again, doesn't cost the city assent, and a lot of these are related to our churches, when you think of Southland, the other churches, how many people are getting fingerprinted, and many of the churches here have a lot of volunteers, so that's all done by commissioner at no cost again to the city. So otherwise, every time that happened, we'd have to call a member back and say, hey, come back to the detachment and do fingerprints, not very good, and like I mentioned, majority of those are the city. Accommodation costs, I think is also important to consider. When I arrived, the city paid for sixteen out of, so what they do is they take how many members there are in the city side, how many are on the rural side, so there's twenty-five members, so the city's gonna pay sixteen twenty-fifths of the accommodation cost, the rural pays nine twenty-fifths of the accommodation cost. However, since I've been here, we've been able to add five traffic members, Brenda and Hedway, which I've classified as a rural employee, Dennis, our community constable, so I've added seven members, no cost to you folks, to our component, which has now made that sixteen out of, sixteen out of thirty-two of our members are now municipal, and sixteen out of thirty-two are provincial, so I've lowered your accommodation costs from sixty-four percent to fifty percent. Again, a huge saving, particularly when you're not paying for those resources. In the end, it would be more, it would be great to get more for the guys, we've talked about it, the RCP advisory committee, I would love it, if you guys can advocate for that, that would be great. I've had an increase of two, I've been here the whole time, but since two thousand one, increase of two, one in two thousand six and one in two thousand fifteen. Meanwhile, the population has grown exponentially. Since I've been here, council has been the same, and has trusted me in managing the issue. You know, John Fair and others of you have always said, Harold will trust you, you know, I think I recognize, or I definitely recognize, that the city's paying for the resources, you wanna make sure that they're being used appropriately. I think the above speaks for itself, you know, I, I think we're met, we're meeting those goals, plus we're, a lot of value, added value, but I also want you to remember that I'm a resident and taxpayer of Steinbach, so it also strikes me that I wanna make sure that I'm not paying taxes unnecessarily to police the rural area. My sergeant, two out of two of the corporals that I currently have, all live in Steinbach, I have an acting corporal who lives in Steinbach, so the entire management team lives in Steinbach, and we're all very cognizant of making sure that the city is, is treated appropriately. Lastly, I meet with the RCP advisory committee once a month, and I think that's been a real benefit, and that's, that's all, I just prepared something quick today that I thought lets you know that the city is gaining a great deal through the additional resources we're able to bring in. That doesn't talk about if we have an accident, we bring in a traffic reconstructionist, and we bring in experts from our headquarters, including drug experts, accident experts, ident experts, and we bring in those resources, again, at no cost, but it allows us to do the job that we do.
Very much, appreciate that. Clarifying.
Thank you very much. Any other, anything further from council?
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a comment after that very, very helpful information, and if there is any doubt that, that you as our staff sergeant, in terms of advocating for Steinbach and making sure that city resources are being used properly, that's, you've made it very clear that the advocacy that's gone there, and frankly, anyone who has questions on that, I would advise them to watch the video of this meeting after in terms of some of those details, because that was, that was very good information, thank you.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive, thank you.
Yes, Staff Sergeant Lanega, we just thank you so much for what you do for our community, and how invested you are, and also how invested I see all your members are. We see them in, we see them on our streets, we, we run into them, we walk, shop with them, and we see how invested they are, and, and we're just so very thankful that you are all, always, always mindful of taxpayers. And even when it comes down to our Traffic Safety Day that we do through the RCP Advisory Committee, even that, we go and we look for donations for the prizes that we give for, for people that are doing the right thing, and even that's showing, the numbers are dropping, so it's, it's having an effect. The presence you show in our community, what you've done with, with Traffic Division, what you've done with break-in entries and, and property crimes, and the reduction of, and working on the, the organized crime, working on our meth crisis and all those things, we, we appreciate that, and we see the effect that it's, that it's having on our community, making our place a better, our community a better place, and we just wanna thank you wholeheartedly from all of council. I speak on behalf of the city of Steinbach when I thank you. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to add that none of it's my work, I have very good people that work for me, and I just get to ride their coattails, so any of the results you're seeing, believe me, aren't Harold out doing it, so I have a great crew of people that work pretty hard. I also wanna thank council, I've been lucky to have worked with the same council since I've been here, now there's a new one, and I trust that we'll have the same support and the same level of commitment. I, I leave my phone on twenty-four hours a day, you can email me, you can call me, I meet with the RCP Advisory Committee once a month, I meet with Troy as needed, I am, my phone doesn't get shut off, even on the holidays, so if you ever have a question, if, if there's a concern, if you're wondering why something's happening, then feel free to give me a call, I'll hand out my business card, and more you have it, Susan used her to get her speeding ticket. So show me, show me.
Well, council, it, it appears that we got the total package. Hardworking, smart, good-looking.
Slim, if you say slim, I'm gonna call you. Then I know.
And humble. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, council, we have no recommendation reports from our city manager, so we'll go straight to nine, the administration, nine A, accounts payable in the back of the book, you've all had a chance to look at it, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Damian Penner, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Anything, any comments? Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Financial statements, so it's nine B.
Administration. Oh, administration.
Yes. If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Actually referring to the previous item, the, the item on page four in the agenda package.
Okay.
Did list the community priorities, and we did neglect to put a note in council's package, however, the request from the RCMP is for city council to ratify what its policing priorities would be for two thousand nineteen, and if council is prepared to make that decision today, then I would recommend that council may wanna review the existing list that was in place as of May of last year, and if council's prepared to proceed, if not, we can bring it back at a future meeting.
No, thank you, thank you for bringing that out, I noticed there was no motion on the bottom of the page, but council, you heard Mr. Workteam's comments, we're looking for a motion to approve the four priorities that we have. Counselor Swigstr.
I'll make the motion that we approve, this is our, our four priorities for this year.
Okay, second, second, Counselor Jake Hebert, go ahead, Counselor Swigstr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, these are priorities that we've had the last few years, and I think they fit together very well, obviously, we want police to, you know, we, we want continued visibility, and we've heard some of the efforts that have been made in that regard. Organized crime, our GIS unit makes a difference there, because that's when we can get some of the in-depth investigation, particularly some of the, the drug issues that, that we have. Obviously, we wanna reduce property crimes and vandalism, and traffic, we know that as the city continues to grow, and you have more cars on the road, and more development, that traffic continues to be an issue, so these are, are sensible priorities to have, they are, they're all just as important now as they were four or five years ago, and so I think it makes sense that we continue with these as our four key priorities for policing in the next year.
Anything further, Counselor even?
Just to comment on priorities, priorities change from community to community, they're not the same, and I think these apply adequately to Steinbach what the priorities are today. Two years from now on the road, they may be different, but for today, I think those are reasonable priorities, and like the staff sergeant said, they are measurable, which is very important.
Anything further, council? Anything to close?
No.
Okay, council, called for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we'll go back to nine B, financial statements that are ending in March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, also in the back of the book, council, you have a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Damian Penner, go ahead, Counselor Penner. Okay, we'll call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. We'll go nine C, that is bylaw twenty-one sixteen, rezoning, minor reading, that starts on page six of our package. Mr. Workteam, can you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, bylaw two-one-one-six is a rezoning bylaw that deals with a recent subdivision application, Lexington Village, there were some minor amendments, recommendation is for council to give this third reading.
Counsel, we're looking for a motion for third reading. Counselor Jake Hebert, second by Counselor Bill Hebert, go ahead, Counselor Hebert.
As stated, they are minor zoning, first and second readings have been completed and been discussed, and I think nothing further needs to be added.
I would say the same, we passed it on the first and second, and I see no reason why we wouldn't pass it on the third.
Anything further, council? Anything in closing, Counselor Hebert?
No, thank you.
Yes, council, these, this is just rubber stamping first and second reading, so I'll call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Moving on to nine D, which is bylaw twenty-one twenty-one, real, realty and education tax levy, that's the third reading also, that will be on page thirteen. Mr. Workteam, could you please introduce this file?
This particular bylaw is something that administratively the city must review and adopt annually in order to authorize the levying of its annual realty and education taxes, recommendation is for city council to give this bylaw a third reading.
Okay, council, we have the recommendation for third reading, do I have a mover? Counselor Swigstr, second by Counselor Damian Penner, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a third and final reading of our budget, and we all supported the budget on the previous readings and the previous motions, we should support it on third reading as well.
Anything further, Counselor Penner? Anything, anything from council? Anything in closing?
No.
I agree, council, if we've supported it so far, we should support it again, so call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We are at nine E, that is the bylaw twenty-one twenty-two, business tax levy, that's the third reading, that starts on page seventeen of your package. Mr. Workteam, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, similar to the one item just considered by council, bylaw twenty-one twenty-two is a similar situation, however, deals strictly with the city's annual business tax levy, recommendation is city council proceed to give this bylaw a third reading as well.
Okay, council, we have the administrative's recommendation, how do we, how do we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve third reading? Making me ask for it, eh? Counselor Swigstr, second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to reviewing this later on this year, but certainly we did say this is continuing for the time being.
Anything further, Counselor Penner? Anything from council? Anything in closing?
I'll vote for it for this year.
Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we are nine F, bylaw twenty-one twenty, that is the rezoning, first reading, that is on page twenty of our package. Mr. Workteam, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this bylaw twenty-one twenty is an application for a rezoning with respect to property with a civic address of one-twenty-six Maplewood Street in Steinbach. The proposed rezoning seeks to change the designation of this property from RLD residential low density to RMD residential medium density, with the anticipated plan to develop, redevelop the existing residential structure into a nine-suite multifamily facility. Should council feel that this application is in keeping with the city's land use policies and zoning bylaw, recommendation is to proceed with giving it first reading, and if that is completed, a public hearing would be scheduled later this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Workteam. Council, how would you like to proceed on that one? Counselor Damian Penner?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Counselor Swigstr. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is first, first reading of this bylaw, and I don't feel that it is exceptionally out of place, being that there is medium density around the area to allow us to proceed to a public hearing to hear from the public.
Anything further?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, the, I agree that we should allow the public hearing to take place, so that way we can hear from the developer and also from members of the public, I know that there have been previous proposals along this area that have generated public interest, and I suspect they may be interested in this one as well.
Anything further, council? Anything in closing? Okay, council, call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We're going to nine G, this is bylaw twenty-ninety-two, the rezoning of Third Street, that starts on page thirty-five of our package. Mr. Workteam, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a file that has been in the books for some time, it was first proposed back in early two thousand eighteen, and with subsequent public hearings, was referred to the Manitoba Municipal Board for further, further hearing. The Manitoba Municipal Board has returned a, a ruling on the file, which is also included in council's package, and with respect to this bylaw, the proposed development would seek to, to meet all required conditions that have been imposed by the Manitoba Municipal Board, as well as the development conditions under the city of Steinbach zoning bylaw and other planning policies. Recommendation for city council is to give this bylaw subject, a third reading, subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Workteam. Council, looking for a motion for a third reading. Counselor Swigstr, second by Counselor Penner, go ahead, Counselor Swigstr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a project that, that we've seen before us a number of times, and to be clear, third reading is, is giving the final approval, and as the city manager noted, it's important to, to recognize that this is subject to the execution of a development agreement, and in the development agreement will be the city zoning requirements, will be the municipal board requirements, every single one are specifically in there, and also in addition to that, we have an infill development policy that the, that the city will be applying in this case, because this is infill, and the developer will have to comply with any, with any expectations in that regard. So those are mandatory, those are in the, in the development agreement, and then subject to that, it makes sense to give third reading.
Anything further?
Counselor Swigstr covered everything.
Anything further, council? Anything in closing?
No.
Well, council, Counselor Swigstr did do a very good job of covering everything, and all we can do now is ask for, call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We go to nine H, that is the building permits for March two thousand nineteen, it's on page fifty-four of your package, there's a motion to approve. Council, we've had eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars worth of permits for a year, year-to-date total of seven million four-hundred-and-forty-five, seven, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five, dwelling units added was one, for a total of thirty-two. Do I have a? Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Penner, or second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments? Anything further, Counselor Hebert? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Nine I, that is Manitoba Hydro Street Lighting, that's on page fifty-five. Looks like we're getting eleven, eleven more lights, and we're just looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Seaman, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments?
We need new streetlights in our new subdivisions, Mr. Mayor, so we need to approve this so that they also can have lighting.
I'd say it's an easy approval. Lighting is important.
Anything, anything further, council? Anything in closing, council? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, that brings us to ten, council question period. Any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll go to eleven, correspondence and petitions. That is eleven A, Hanover School Division. That is re cottonwood sidewalk letter. Council, we have this, we've all read this in our, in our package. How would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna provide just a few comments just in regards to the RCP Advisory Council, because this is an issue that we have discussed a number of times at the advisory council meetings. And as we've, as we certainly know, our staff sergeant and the RCP are making efforts in terms of, you know, responding when there are issues that, that come up in that area. There are, in terms of the specific comments with the sidewalk, I will just say that the advisory council is not recommending that the sidewalk be closed. There are a number of reasons for that. One of the major ones is that that sidewalk is actually, it's a public reserve. And so even if the sidewalk, even if the concrete were to be removed, there's a storm sewer underneath there, it would still need to remain open and reasonably accessible. And so it still has the potential to be an area that, that people can congregate in, whether the concrete happens, whether the concrete happens to be there or not. So the advisory council is not recommending moving in that direction, and that is something that we've discussed a number of times. Something the RCP, our advisory council has discussed, that has come up a few times, is something to consider, and I'm not making a motion, I'm just putting it out there, something that we've discussed, is, is making a change in terms of parking. So specifically along the area, along Cottonwood Drive and Cottonwood Bend, to change it to two-hour parking, to have the same type of parking restriction that we currently have along Mackenzie. And so that way, it reduces the likelihood of, for example, students parking along that road and then, you know, using the sidewalk and such. And so that is something that, that the RCP advisory council has discussed and is suggesting that council take a look at. And so I would suggest that is something we could ask administration to, to look into and, and then see what, what the rest of council feels and such. So those, those are some of the comments that I would have at this time. There's no easy solutions here, but that's, that is the general feeling of the advisory council at this point.
You, Counselor Swigster, is there any other comments from council? Mr. Warquentin, is that, is that something that we could, that we could return to administration and ask for a, like a clear answer or policy on how to, on whether to go about that? The two-hour parking?
Certainly, we could, we could take that under consideration. I would get comments from professional staff and provide a report back to council in the near future.
Okay. And then at that point, we can, we can make a decision on that. And then, so that will come back to council in a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, council, I think that, that's a great direction to go. I think we'll leave it with our administration, and then we'll do a study for us and get back to us, and then we can make a decision on it. Okay? Thank you. So now we have eleven B, that is the Seine River Conservation District minutes and reports of January twenty-ninth. That is on page, starts on page fifty-nine. Counselor Hebert, you are on that board. Do you have anything to add?
No, basically, what you see, that you see the minutes for not only the Manning Canal area, but the area of District Five and some of the other areas, and the items that are discussed. And just for council's information, we had another meeting this morning, and we're working on some projects and attempting to get some grants from the province to further some of the projects that have been suggested.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Well, I'd suggest, this is just for information purpose.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take it as information, but thank you very much for your work on that board. Eleven C, Minister of Municipal Relations, read the Mobility Disadvantaged Transportation Program.